The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. This evening, we have with us Pastor Jeff Humphrey of Parkside Baptist Church, who will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's pray together. So, Lord, we thank you. As I look around this room, I thank you for Dennison, and I thank you for the youth and the senior and all the ages, Lord, that just have come together to make this great community, Lord. We know that good gifts come from you, and we consider Dennison a good gift, and we know that this place comes from you. And, Lord, I also thank you for the leaders that are in front of me tonight. Lord, thank you for their leadership in helping us to look back over these last 150 years and realize all the major ways that you have used us and used this area to not just make an impact in this part of Texas, but our state, our nation, and our world, Lord. We thank you for the ways that we were able to celebrate Major Butler recently, Lord, and celebrate people like President Eisenhower. And so, Lord, again, we thank you for what was these last 150 years. I pray wisdom for these leaders that are in front of me, Lord, that they will help us to build a today that will call out great leaders for the years to come, that people will always think of Dennison as a place where leadership and quality of life comes from. And so, Lord, just thank you for their leadership in this moment. Lord, again, we thank you for our city, and we thank you for giving us this gift, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jeff. We are honored this evening to have with us three Boy Scouts from Troop 403, Presley Quarles, Landon Sylvester, and Mason Harvey. These young men are here to observe their government in action. They're working on a merit badge, and they're going to lead us in our pledge. Gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in this world.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. This evening, we have a very special award to present. It is the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded this Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Dennison for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. This marks the 10th, I'll say that again, the 10th year in a row the City of Dennison has been awarded this Certificate of Achievement. Bob Scott, our GFOA representative at the time, and Assistant City Manager, CFO, for the City of Carrollton, Texas, presented our first-ever Certificate of Achievement for our fiscal year 2011 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report during a council meeting on January 14th, 2013. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the areas of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. The Accounting Division received both the certificate and the medallion to be placed on that plaque. We would like, this evening, to recognize those in the Accounting Department who are responsible for compiling the information needed for this report. So, as I call your name, would you please stand and come up to the podium, please? Rachel Evans. Zara Taylor. Amber Pilcher. Orlando Macedo. Did I say that right? Okay. Laurie Alsabon. And, before her promotion, I would like to add Rene Wagner. So, Ms. Wagner, if you'll join them up there as well. And she has the plaque, and you're gonna, we're gonna add one more medallion to it, right?
Well, actually...
Oh, it's already...
The medallion for 2020 is on here. There's the award we received in 2011. So, 10 years ago on our screen is the first one that the City of Dennison received. And now, we receive none. And so, what they did, the next year, they decided to do the granite plaque and have the medallions for each year. So, there's none here, but we have this one up in the Accounting Division. But I have to say, this team does an amazing job with the audit each year and putting together the financials and making sure that it's very transparent. And so, it's an award well deserved, but I know they've probably wanted a picture with you.
Well, as a community, and as a governmental body, this means more than you can possibly know that your work is recognized as being of high excellence. So, thank you all very much for all you do for our city. Also, as a governmental body, we are so privileged that, as an organization, we recognize our team members as assets, that without them, we would be nothing. And once a quarter, we recognize those who have reached significant milestones in their career with the city. We start counting, I guess, Amy, at five years, and then we recognize increments of five. So, this evening, we are recognizing five, 15, 20, and 30. So, the Director of Employee Services, Amy Ley, is going to join me, and we, as we call your name, as Amy calls your name, would you please come up and let us recognize you?
So, we want to recognize all of our team members, even those that aren't able to be here because of shift work or whatever. Aaron Alvarango of the Police Department is celebrating five years, and Chief Fettler was able to take his plaque to him. Also, we want to recognize with the Police Department Darren Riddick, celebrating 15 years. With the Fire Department, Levin Haddick, 15 years of service. And then, we have two that are present here tonight. I'll give you this one to present, for 20 years of service, Rene Wagner. And recognizing 30 years of service tonight, Kurt Kern.
Can we ask for 30 more?
Sure.
Did you get all the pictures you wanted, Mary?
I need one of you with your name.
Okay.
Hey, Kurt, can we get a picture?
Oh, sure.
Amy, you need to be in the picture, please.
One, two, three.
Thank you. At this point, in each meeting, we set aside time for any citizen who wishes to speak on any item on the agenda that is an action item. We have received only one card this evening, and it is from Mary Carum. Mary, that is a public hearing item. Do you want to speak now or at the point of the public hearing?
At the point.
Okay, all right. Then there will be no public comments. First item on the agenda, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a bar for Champagne Charlie's Cocktail House located at 120 South Burnett Avenue, case number 2022-022CUP. Ms. York.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit in order to operate a bar for property located at 120 South Burnett that falls within the Central Area Zoning District. Champagne Charlie's will be a new cocktail house, and the applicant wishes to establish a stylish and comfortable atmosphere with a unique and approachable beverage and food menu. This is just a concept layout of what the interior of the building will look like. The applicant is requesting hours of operation to include Thursday through Friday, 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, or 11, yeah, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM. As this property falls within the Central Area Zoning District, there are no parking requirements, and the applicant and their, the people that would like to come to the bar will utilize on-street parking, as well as the many parking lots that we have in the downtown area. At the planning and zoning meeting that was held on March 22nd, there were some concerns about what kind of entertainment might be provided at this location, and the applicant stated that while they might have live entertainment inside, it was going to, the atmosphere was mostly going to be low-level noise to foster a more of a conversation-type of bar. And the applicant is here as well, and they could probably expand on that. And with that, I am present for any questions that you may have, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name's Cody Riggs. I am one of the co-owners of Champagne Charlie's. As a representative of the company, we'd like to announce, basically, that we are here as a community meeting ground. We want to provide an atmosphere where people can come, read a book, study, have a conversation, enjoy the atmosphere with their fellow community members. My business partner is a current resident here. I will be moving here eventually, as long as, you know, you accept us. But we would like to provide an entertainment facility that is different than what you probably have already in the city, something that's closer than the casino, something that's closer than Dallas, a place you can get a cocktail, a place you can imbibe and have a great little bite of food, enjoy our company, and let us kind of talk a little bit with you. If anybody has any questions, both of us are here to answer, and we appreciate it.
Questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a bar for Champagne Charlie's Cocktail House with hours of operation to include Thursday and Friday, 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Welcome to Dennison. Item 5V, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending the 2018 Comprehensive Plan to include the City of Dennison Parks and Trails Master Plan. Mr. Eastwood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the March 1st, 2021 City Council meeting, council approved a professional services agreement with half associates to prepare the city's first Parks and Trails Master Plan. This approval allowed the city to work on preparing and incorporating a Parks and Trails Master Plan into the city's 2018 Comprehensive Plan, which calls for a system-wide Parks and Trails Master Plan to address recreational priorities, improve the quality of the park system, and evaluate and prioritize potential projects. To make the Parks and Trails Master Plan a part of the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, an ordinance amendment is required. Kelsey McNeese and Lenny Hughes are here representing half associates and will be providing an overview highlighting the final draft of the Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to present to you our outcomes from our year-long process on this Park and Trail Master Plan. It's been really exciting to work with your city, and we're happy to present this with all this evening. So, we'll briefly go over the background of the planning process, our plan goals and objectives, the outcome recommendations, and then the plan for implementation. So, this plan, the purpose of it, was to guide improvements for expansion of park, trail, and recreation needs in Dennison, guide design standards, and then help with the prioritization of implementation of these recommendations. This was a year-long process, and it's been very exciting. We started in March of 2021 with some initial observation, data gathering, some on-the-ground, ground-truthing of the city and seeing the amenities as they exist today. Our second phase was community engagement. We held a public open house, some steering committee meetings, and stakeholder listening sessions. Our third phase, we evaluated the system, performed some needs assessments, which led into our fifth phase, which was creating some recommendations, and then our final phase that we're in now, plan review. So, our engagement methods included a steering committee. Many of you were a part of that. We had a lot of great input through this. We also held stakeholder listening sessions that were more specific groups that had more specific topics that we talked about. We had public open houses. We had one at the beginning where we got insight and feedback from the community, and then one at the end where we presented our preliminary recommendations. And we also had a community survey where we received lots of great feedback and helped guide our recommendations for this plan. The outcome, the major outcome from this planning process is a report. It's broken down into six chapters. We have our introduction and community context. That's really kind of background of our, of the city and our findings. We dive deeper into parks and trails in the third and fourth chapter, and we review our recommendations and how we hope they'll be implemented over time in the final two chapters. So, the goals that were created were through a lot of staff help and through the guidance of our steering committee. The steering committee was that sounding board, so really helped guide these goals, and we think that they really reflect the overall community vision of Dennison. So, our first goal looks at park access, creating a connected system of parks. Then we looked at amenities in the second goal, providing new and improved amenities in park, trail, and other recreation facilities for all ages and abilities. The third goal focused more on trails and bikeways, providing a well-connected system to key destinations throughout the city. Our fourth goal, recreational tourism, leveraging the great system that you have today and the one that will be in the future, more regional draw and attraction. And then our fifth goal, having an efficient system, a well-maintained system, and one that is operating efficiently. So, our plan recommendations, this is the bulk of our report and the outcomes that we created through the planning process. The methodology, as I spoke about previously, we had a lot of community engagement opportunities, really helped guide us in insight for what people are wanting and what the demands are today. We also performed some analyses. Our needs assessment looked at how well the city's amenities, parks and trail amenities are serving the community today, and then looked at barriers and constraints to overcome, as well as opportunities there are for new facilities and updating facilities in the future. I'll start with our park recommendations. So, there's a lot going on, so I'll try to break down this map. We look at target level of services for communities nationwide. It is to have about 10 to 12 acres of park per 1,000 residents. Dennison isn't quite meeting that, so we're looking at how can you meet this in the future to best serve your residents? The areas that are in red show those areas that are underserved and where we would look to get that 120 acres of additional parkland to meet that target level of service in the future. Some other areas that we look at that would be ideal for future park development are in these yellow and blue bubbles. They're areas that have development coming or that are, we know development might happen in the future, and it would be an opportunity to work with developers to ensure that there's parkland in the future. And then, looking at resources today, such as unprogrammed parkland. This is parkland that the city already owns and just could be utilized for new amenities, having those recreational trends included in the park system. For our trail and bikeway facilities, we looked at a hierarchy. We looked at different facilities that serve different functions and meet the needs of different users. So, it's important to have those diverse facilities to provide recreation and mobility needs for all residents in Dennison. So, for the trail facilities, we have off-street trails. These are found in places like green belts and removed from roadways, and they're usually very wide, about 12 to 14 feet. Side paths along roadways, these provide those connections along major arterials and to key destinations, and they're between eight and 10 feet in width. We looked at soft-surface trails, mostly within the park, because those don't really provide that mobility need, but they'll meet a recreational need. And then, we looked at sidewalk improvements. We know sometimes wider facilities are not possible, but improving sidewalks helps with those pedestrian connections. Then, on on-street bikeways, we looked at three different types of facilities, shared-use lanes, looking at the routes that cyclists are using today and how we can make a designated route. Bike lanes, they're more buffered, and they're protected, and they would be designated on major arterials. And then, wide shoulders, we know that there's a desire for long-distance bicycle routes and creating those connections outside Dennison and bringing people into Dennison through those routes. So, this is a great way and an opportunity to work with outside entities for implementing those facilities. So, this is our overall recommendations, about 102 miles of additional trail and bikeways, which is a lot compared to what's here today. We have, you have about 12 miles today, but this system would greatly increase overall connectivity around the city. So, breaking it down to the trail facilities, there's about 30 miles of off-street trail looking in those green belts and the abandoned rail corridors, really opportunities to have connections that are removed from roadways where people feel safe and provide those long, continuous connections. Side paths, we looked at major roadways. Connecting to schools is very important. So, those side paths would serve that purpose, about 14 miles. Soft-surface trails, we have only recommended in Katy Park. We had a parallel planning effort for the design of that park, and a trail facility was an outcome of that engagement process. And then, sidewalk improvements, finding roadways that really provide those key connections but might not be wide enough to support wider facilities, but with filling in the gaps and enhancing the conditions, they would help that overall pedestrian connectivity in the city. Bike facilities, we have about 20 miles of shared-use lanes. These follow routes that we've heard from the community, that existing routes that bicyclists use, but having those signed and designated will support better for visitors as they come and safety and awareness for motorists. And then, we have bike lanes along some major north-south arterials. And then, like I mentioned, the rural roadways that kind of lead in and out of Dennison, those are those wide shoulders. So, at Build Out, the total mileage would be about 114 miles of bike and ped facilities. So, we understand that that's a lot of, that's a lot of miles. That's exciting, but overwhelming, and so, we understand that this is to be implemented over time. And so, in order to get to this 114 or maybe more in the future miles of bike and ped facilities, we prioritize, we help, we find the segments that are to be prioritized in the near term, and those that maybe once funding's available or there's coordination with other entities, those can be implemented. So, through this steering committee, we developed priority criteria for trails and bikeways, and they align in some places, especially connecting to destinations, filling gaps, comforts, and ease of implementation. So, we weighted these, and we used the weight that was given as we analyzed each corridor segment, and that's how we developed the priority that was assigned to those corridors, which is found in more detail in our report. So, this map shows an overall prioritization of segments. There's about 20 miles of high-priority bikeways and about nine miles of high-priority trail facilities. So, these would be what we'd want y'all to implement in the near term that would best fill those connections and build that momentum for a better connected bike-ped system. So, plan implementation, this is where the rubber hits the road, you know, pun intended with bicycles, but we structure our implementation plan. We have goals that we developed. We have objectives that are more specific topics, and then we have our action items. So, this is the checklist. This is the tangible list that the city can use when they're looking at, what are we going to do next year? What should we be implementing? So, we break this down into action types. We have investments, operations, partnerships with outside entities and organizations, policy changes and regulations, and then additional studies to help with feasibility. And then, again, we have timeframes like we had for the prioritization, and we have identified high-priority items that we've heard from the community and from staff and councils, so. Just a brief look at some of these items we have listed. We had parallel efforts for Loy Lake and Katy Park for their development of a master plan, and we'll touch on that a little later. But things include coordinating with developers for new parkland and park improvements, having open space for those passive uses, providing inclusive amenities, pursuing funding opportunities, looking at additional feasibility studies that will enhance recreation in Dennison, and then reviewing trends to make sure that you're competitive in the metroplex. Safety, addressing safety as you implement more trails and bikeways, and that they're being incorporated as development comes along. Recreational tourism, you have great parks today, and they can only be better, and they attract regional desire, so how can we bolster them even more to host events and tournaments? And then, maintenance, maintenance and operations are important for a functioning and successful park system, so providing guidelines for operations and maintenance, making things streamline and efficient. So, now, I'm going to turn it off to Lenny, who is going to talk a little bit about Katy Park.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Lenny Hughes. I will be reporting on the...
My name's Lenny Hughes, and will be reporting on the Katy Soccer Complex. Just quickly, Katy Soccer Complex is, it's about a 20-acre park, is currently being used for practice facilities. It is bounded on the south of Flora Lane, and over to the east is Crawford Street, where there's some temporary parking. And on the northwest corner of Loom Lane and Flora Lane, there's an existing backstop. So currently, people are using that for baseball, softball pickup games, as well as practice for soccer on the fields there. In the central area, there's a grove of trees that we'd like to preserve, just from the, what we've heard from many of the other people, the public meetings, but there's also some drainage that kind of cuts through the park. And so it's kind of separated on the east side with, by the drainage area with some existing fields, and there's also some fields over on the west side of the park area itself. And so based on the input that we received from the public and also with meetings with staff and the committee, they would like to have an area for multi-generational play, for playgrounds, also areas for shade and gathering for, for picnicking, as well as an active recreation for soccer play there on the park itself. And so looking at the overall master plan for Katy Park, we have on the west side, there's parking that we've, we've looked at based on the comments received from the public having parking there, as well as they would like to keep the baseball backstop, but also use this as a multi-use field. And so where you would have pickup games for, for baseball, but also you can have two soccer fields there on the west side. And as we move more towards the central area, if you get more soccer fields, there're roughly anywhere from 260 to 180 on soccer fields. And then also, there are just a little bit west of that central parking area, you have two smaller soccer fields, as well as another mid-sized soccer field there. And so the thought is to have on the, on the west side more of the lighting soccer fields, and on the far east side, which is much a larger soccer field, would be lit as well. In the area, we talked about the drainage, and so we want to make that more of a destination. And so there's a drainage area that cuts through there. We wanted to make that more usable for the people in the area. On the east side of that drainage, there's a nice grove of trees we still want to protect. And so that's where we would place a new playground within that area, also having a splash pad, and just with some of the comments received, having pickleball courts. And so pickleball courts will be on the north side of the parklot area, as well as three to four, four basketball courts there as well. On the perimeter out of north, there's a soft-surface trail, natural surface trail, as Kelsey mentioned before. That would provide access and tie into the parking lot on the northeast side of the park area, as well as having walking trails around the perimeter for the park. Here's a sketch of what that will look like. These are builds here that shows the different areas for pavilions, the lighted fields, soccer fields, as well as the trailhead for the area for the parking, and then also that active core that we've mentioned before. And then there's the parking over to the west, as well as the restrooms there on the, the other parking on that west-sided area, as well as the walking trails over there to the north. So this is an aerial perspective of what that will look like. We, we mentioned the, that central core area where we have the playground. There would be parking around each, all sides of that area. To the right of that is that large light, lit, lighted soccer field there, as well as with the, the walking trails you kind of see on the perimeter floor, Flora Lane, as well as providing access to the, to the parking lot area for the trailhead. And in the background, you kind of see the weaving through the trees with that soft-surface trail there. So a thought again, this is a destination for the, for the community, where we have lighted soccer fields, as well as in keeping incorporating the basketball, the, the baseball backstop, as well as playing areas for folks that want to play basketball. So at that point, I'd like to open it for any questions or comments you guys may have.
Before we, well, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? I know, Mary, you, you presented a card requesting to speak, so state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Mary Kiram, and I'm speaking tonight for Georgia Mason because we both have passion for this agenda item. The, my address is 2117 Park Village. So excuse me while I read, but I'm going to read his words. "Good evening, Mayor God and members of Dennison Council. Over the past 10 years, I have witnessed and occasionally been involved in some remarkable progress in Dennison. In that time, many developments have taken place. This has included the new Dennison High School campus, THF Park, and Gateway Village, the creation of a thriving business district at 691 and 75, the creation of a dog park at Waterloo Park, the start of the Katy Trail with an amazing bridge over Loy Lake Road, the start of the D3 Project on Main Street, the remaking of Chestnut Street, the creation of an accessibility trail at Waterloo Lake, and improvements at many of our community parks." That was a long sentence. I had to breathe three times in there. Oh, and I forgot to mention the facade program that led to the amazing restoration of many buildings within the Dennison Historic District. All of that in just 10 years. Can you believe he's only been here 10 years? The requests of the business owners and residents of Dennison asked for these improvements, and the city listened. With the current increase of housing developments and growth of existing areas, the city has, is poised for a record year of growth. Anticipating this growth, the Parks Department has worked with HAF associates to develop a long-range plan that is aimed at satisfying the recreational needs of the present population and the expected needs of the increase in population. This plan is a very comprehensive document that will provide the framework on which to improve our present parks and create new facilities for the needs of the increased population. As the chairman of the Parks Commission and a citizen of Dennison, I'm asking you to accept the proposal and keep Dennison moving forward, and he thanks you. One added word, and that's that we have a wonderful gift with all our parks now, and we have a wonderful ratio of people to acreage, and that's the thing we really want to in, keep in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name's Gwen Braxton, and I live at 1720 Middle Park Lane, Dennison, Texas. So I just, first of all, excellent job. I really liked the presentation. However, there were a couple of parks that I know that each time they come up, they never make it to the master plan, one of them being, I know, and thankful for the work that's being done, but Munson Park and then the MLK Park. And with all the development, that seems like that area, you still have to migrate to get over to all the destinations where the, actually all of the, I guess I would say, the more prominent activities are going to be located. And that's kind of difficult for people that still live in the Tower Lane area, those students who actually go to Terrell, live out on Bond Drive, live over on Parnell, and then there's a lot of development over there. So I'm just wondering, at what point will they actually make it to that master plan? I know we're talking about another 10 years, and we're talking growth, but if each 10 years those parks never make it, do they actually go away? Do they continue to get the paint and some things, but not all of the, the glitz and the glamour for the more productive things like the soccer and the basketball? Matter of fact, last week, someone reached out for, and asked that we can get, if we could get someone to come up and fix the sloping basketball goal that's up at MLK Park. So I just want to know if we're going to add those things or if we're going to continue to maybe progress and progress and then digress and digress a little bit at the same time.
Well, to answer your question, they most definitely are not going away. We are very proud of both of those parks. If, if you read the entire master plan, they're, part of the plan is the appropriateness of activities in each park, because what's appropriate in one park is not appropriate in another park, as you see the, the improvements going on in the disc golf right now. So they, they are certainly part of the plan. That does not mean that, that there will be soccer fields there, because that park probably doesn't lend itself to soccer fields. But, but there will be the appropriateness of activities, and Munson Park is probably one of the most beautiful parks we have with those rolling hills. So it is, it is a great asset to the city and something that we will continue to improve.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask, because I know last year, this had already been underway, and Brian and yourself actually had an opportunity to be a part of the June 10th activities there, and some of those questions came up while we were there. And so they were items that we addressed to Brian, or Mr., or Councilman Hender, while we were there, and so just following up and wanting to thank them for the work that's been done, and then also make sure that we're considering the other things as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
I think some of the good things that we got out of this plan were our trailheads, which we included at Munson Park, along with saying that that area has a really big space north of it that's underutilized, and how can we better utilize that, and studying that further. And then in Ms. Howard's part of the presentation, it included the ranking of those walking trails and how we need to get connectivity and connectivity from Munson Park to THF Park. That was a high priority, so I think we're really moving forward, and I think we're including every area that we can in our park system, and it's, it's a beautiful plan. It's very, very inclusive and...
Discussion from council.
Yeah, I have a, Christine, if you could go back to that design. I have a question about, a concern. I think it's a great design. It looks beautiful. My concern is on the far west end, and I think I heard you say there would be parking and a restroom, but the designs that I've seen don't have a restroom on the west end. If you're playing small kid baseball on that corner, it's a long way to that restroom in the center.
Yes, I saw, I think there, there are two restrooms on site, or maybe three. I know there's, there's a restroom in the central area, and there's also one on that far west side by the parking lot.
It's far west side or far east side?
West.
I saw that they were on the east side.
There's, there's one on the east side as well.
So there's actually three?
Yes.
Would you tell me?
There's an east side park, there's an east side restroom, there's also...
It's on the bottom up there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just didn't see that. Okay.
Yeah, there it is. There's actually three that'll be on site.
My concern to the answer, thank you.
How to get out my glasses?
Thank you, Lenny. Before I call for a motion, I would just like to first thank Justin for his enthusiasm and his passion to lead us through this, this year-long process, which has, which I think has created an amazing plan. You know, we talk all the time, and we don't know where we're going if we don't have a plan to get there. So this was certainly gives us a plan to get to where we want to be in our park system. And I want to thank HAF and Associates because they came here, they got our vision, they, they understood what we wanted and where we wanted to go, and they have done such an amazing job of leading us through this process. So thank you, both of you, Kendall and Lenny, and, and the rest of you, the, the team. It was just the two of you, but, but Kendall, we probably saw you more often than we saw the rest of the team. So, so thank you for that. It was, it was a great experience. I was so glad to be able to be a part of the process, so. Any other discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending the 2018 comprehensive plan to include the City of Dennison's Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Second. There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to all. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and act on approving a grant application for the FEMA fiscal year 2022 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Program. Ms. Bowen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Program makes federal funds available to local communities for surface transportation infrastructure projects that will have a significant local or regional impact. This project consists of designing and developing plans, specifications, and bidding documents for the reconstruction of West Crawford Street from Farm-to-Market Road 131 to west of the US 75 Frontage Road. The West Crawford Street improvements involve the construction of approximately 5,520 feet of divided reinforced concrete street. The proposed roadway will be two 25-feet-wide back-to-back sections with curb and gutter on each side, a raised median, center turn lane with sidewalks on both sides of the road. In 2015 and 2018, Dennison conducted a pavement data collection and rating. The Pavement Condition Index, also referred to as the PCI, is a numerical indicator that rates surface condition of the pavement and is adopted by the American Public Works Association. Preventative mitigation is recommended for projects at a 75 or above scoring. Anything scoring at 50 or below is recommended for a full rebuild. This location that we're proposing scored a 40 PCI. The project cost is $14.8 million with a 20% city match of $3 million. The funds for the match would come from the Street Fund, Fund 15. A 2019 bond was issued to pay for the street projects, and there is money available in this fund to cover the 20% match requirement should the project be awarded funding. The expected award decision is slated for January of 2023. Staff recommends approving the grant application for the FEMA fiscal year 2022 Raise Grant Program. Thank you for your consideration of this funding opportunity, and Carrie Jones and I are here and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Bowen? There's no question, there's a need.
Yes.
Discussion from council. Thank you. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a grant application for the FEMA fiscal year 2022 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Program.
Second. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hunter and a second by Councilmember Court Rye. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 7A, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the quarterly budget update from the Dennison Arts Council. Mr. Warner. Oh, Mr. Warner is not...
He's outside, I'm inside.
Will you want to introduce her?
I would be happy to, yes.
Thank you, Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron Warner, Director of Leisure Services. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce Cindy Salem. She recently took over for the Dennison Arts Council, and they've been doing some fantastic things. You might have seen some of the new events pop up and things on social media that you can attend, so kudos to everything that y'all have going on, and we're excited to hear an update today.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Let's see if I can go in the right direction here. Now we have. First of all, thank you for trusting us with the hotel and tourism tax. What I'm doing today is to give you an overview of how we plan to spend the money this first quarter and a little taste of what we plan to do for the rest of the year. One of the first things we did in compliance with our contract... One of the first things we did in compliance with our contract was we established a separate bank account that had not been done. And in honesty, we had not had even our own bank account, apparently, until a couple of years ago. But one of the criteria in our contract is to put this grant money in a separate account. Completely makes sense, since that was done in January. So keep in mind, I'm not reporting on the entire Arts Council budget, but the part that is designated. Roughly, this wasn't an easy division, but I roughly did the last three hot tourism tax payments. So we're calling our current balance a little over $37,000. And in this particular quarter, one of the largest expenses we had was $8,600 toward the Munson mural, and we took that out of our public art fund. The next thing we'll talk about is Art Walk and Wine. We're really excited about this. It's May 21st, and we use ZIP codes to identify whether we're bringing in tourists from outside, and that's our goal. And so we have elicited businesses, we're in the process right now of signing up businesses, artists, and performing artists to come in and enjoy all our many local wineries. And of course, the winery is kind of the hook, we provide the art part. And we're hoping this year to increase our attendance. We had 350 last year, and I do not know the percentage that came from outside, but we were pleased that we're recruiting from outside our area. And so by repeating this event, it, we are hoping to have over 600 people. This is a popular event, and we're really hoping that we can get more and more tourists to come up and spend money here and maybe even spend the night. So we budgeted $1,000, $10,000, and the majority of that is used in marketing. To reach those people, we need a little bit more than Facebook, so we're going to start working on that. Another agenda item that'll come up this summer, but it's in our performing arts budget, and that's one of our sponsorships for Music on Main, so we're happy to be able to do that with the art money. Probably our biggest insurance event is the Diaz de la Muertos, and that's going to be November 5th this year. We budgeted $20,000. This goes for a combination of marketing, but also to bring in some of the big acts. We're lucky, this is year 11 for Dennison, and we had already seen that we're bringing in tourists. We're bringing in people that actually come up to see, to see their family and friends and spend the weekend. So our goal this year is to stretch that into the entire week. We have Monsters on Main on Monday, so we're going to try to make the events happen all week long. So it could be something that, really getting that festival atmosphere up all the way till Saturday, and we're even working on possibly using some of our headliners to do some little touch of something on Sunday, so we can increase the tourists that want to come up and spend the entire weekend. I'm really excited about this. This is an established event that they've put many, many hours into over the years. A couple of other just little tidbits. For the first time in 42 years, in 19, 2019, they got an office. They'd been working through the chamber for many, many years. But when we started with the current council, we took a look at that, the way we could use that space. It's beautiful, it's now a store over in the Katy Depot, and we felt that we could really serve the public better if we were in a more public location with better traffic. And so we have the 517 space. We've got two agendas that particularly pertain to this grant. One, it will be an art gallery. There's a need to have more critical mass of galleries and artists downtown. We had it in the past, and we're getting there. But having another one kind of starts to get us up to the point that we can begin to promote this again as an art destination. But the other thing we really want to be able to do is promote the tourism in general, and a good example is our public art. You know, you read all about what do we do in an art community? We are already there in many ways, but we could do a better job of telling people what we have and getting people to come up and enjoy the public art, and even people that are just walking by saying, what do you have here? Be a little bit of a tourist ambassador. So we are planning to open on the 23rd, I think it is. Wish us luck, there's a lot to do in that space before then. But we, we've already started by a little, having a little meet and greet with RC, who was the muralist that came up and did it. It was well-attended and really well-received. So we see this as a place we can also do performing arts, we can have artists come in and really get people to come in and take advantage of our downtown. Finally, we have a real, it's a long-term goal, and really hoping we can get to it this year. But another one is to put some things in place that promote our public art. Some things that can be done is websites that people could come up and actually use, like geolocating or QR codes, find the art, learn about the artist, understand what it is. And this is kind of the weekend thing, where you bring the girls in, you get your Instagram shots, and we have, we have it. The statues and the murals and, you know, the dumpsters even. So we're real excited. It's got to take a little more infrastructure. We've got a start of the list of everything, but we are very hopeful that we could pull that off. If it's not this year, it's still going to be on the docket for next year. So thank you. That's kind of our report for first quarter. I'll be back in three months to tell you how that quarter went.
Thank you so much for all you're doing.
You're welcome.
Discussion from council.
Your enthusiasm is infectious.
Hey, I have a good group.
Y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was information only, requires no action from council. Item 7B, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding recommendations from the Main Street Advisory Board regarding a downtown sidewalk usage design guide. Ms. Dow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Main Street Advisory Board has been working to try to keep ahead of the new designing downtown Dennison and be prepared when we get the new wider sidewalks. So we'll have a plan, and the business owners won't have to buy new furniture, especially, you know, we don't want anybody to buy some in anticipation of this and then get something that's not in accordance with our plans. So we're trying to really stay ahead of that. So we've, we've got the guide that you all received in your packets. We feel like that's a chapter, maybe, or a section of a guide, because there's going to be other things that will come up. This can't, you know, solve all our problems or take care of all the needs that need addressing. But we wanted to get this in place, so, you know, as I said, we could plan for the future. And, you know, sections of our D3 are already coming online, and so we, we can't wait any longer, the group felt. And then we felt like that we should adopt this now for the whole downtown. And looking at it, maybe we call that the entertainment district, maybe it's the historic district. The entertainment district seems to fit with the same guidelines, so that's, but we felt like we should, you know, the side streets and the areas that aren't constructed yet, we should go ahead and begin implementing this. This is our existing guidelines, and basically it says that you have insurance on file, a business owner must have insurance on file with the city to place items on the sidewalk. So we're discussing the public use of the sidewalk tonight, not private property. And we have to have six feet of clear space so people can walk through. And the property owner is responsible for the condition of the sidewalk. This doesn't change any of those things, it just adds a process that we want people to, it's an administrative process. So if you want to put items on the sidewalk for dining, then you present that to our office, and the Historic Preservation Board and Main Street Design Committee will address that. That's our proposal, that those groups would look through the applications. That is the same process that we go through for the historic, for the public art at this time, and it seems to be working well. The sections of this guide are, you know, we state the purpose, and then we have the outdoor dining section, we have the street furniture and fixture, and then the outdoor Something that I failed to put in your packet and realized as I was reading through it that I should have, I looked back and, and got the dimensions for the sidewalks and what widths everything would be. So we will have a 12-foot sidewalk that we're working with. There's also eight-foot, eight-feet furnishing zone, so that's, you know, like our benches and trash receptacles and things like that. A three-foot barrier, 16-feet parking space, and then 11-foot lanes, and that's, that gets you to 50, and then you'll multiply that times two. I think as we get onto the 500 block, there are a little bit wider streets. But anyway, that's, that's roughly what we'll have is a 12-foot sidewalk. So the wider sidewalks are designed for public dining. You know, we've already been receiving information or interest from the development community, so I've given the draft copy out to the downtown businesses and also to developers that have inquired about it and are quite excited that we're looking toward that. This contributes to the vibrancy of the Dennison's historic district, and it creates dynamic experiences to walk, socialize, and dine. And I think that's, you know, what we want. We want a place that people can recreate, people can have a good time and enjoy themselves and their families. Again, the purpose of the guide is to provide consistent standards for the purchasing decisions of the business owners. It's to ensure quality outdoor seating, areas and aesthetics. It's to guide appropriate use of the public sidewalk and for outdoor dining planners and amenities, and to promote sidewalk safety. If, if you were able to read through this, you see many instances where it's talking about safety, you know, for the visually impaired, for people walking down the street, the, the items are weighted so they don't blow away, and also that they're visually appealing. We would prefer to get ahead of it now and state what they can have than go down the street and point out what they can't have. This is patterned after other cities, Alexandria, Virginia, Sheila Vista, California, and others. And those are larger cities, but I really feel like the scale of this, it's very basic. It's not, you know, big-city-ish. When you read it, it's, it's something that we can adapt locally and I believe is simplistic, and that's the beauty in it. It provides acceptable dimensions for outdoor dining areas and access. It provides description of acceptable sidewalk barriers and promotes use of durable and high-quality outdoor furnishings and materials for safety and comfort. And you'll notice it doesn't give real specifics. It tells what you can't have. You can't have plastic chairs and things like that, but it, you know, it tries to just be general and not extremely specific. This is just an example of a visual that's in the guide, and one thing I wanted to bring out is the umbrellas. Sinage is not allowed on the umbrellas, according to our proposal. We feel like that could visually clutter things, and also signage is not going to be any different for your business, whether you have outdoor dining or whether you don't have outdoor dining. So you can't add 10 more signs if you have outdoor dining or even one more, it's the same as if for the other, other areas. And of course, it mentions detectable banners, quality furniture, umbrellas if you choose to have them, and then at least a 36-inch height of the fence, so people won't be stumbling over it. And that's just the rendering. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim Hender and Mayor Gott for their participation in this with our Main Street Advisory Board and input, because we met on this more than one time and had a lot of discussion, kicked around a lot of things, and are open to other ideas that you may have. We definitely want it to be the best document that it can be, so if you have any other comments, I brought my pen to make notes.
Questions for Ms. Dow?
I think the big thing that we did with this document that the Main Street Board wanted was that it's just for the sidewalk usage, so this doesn't affect 1880 Ice House or Frank and Lola's, because they're on private property. So that's the big thing. This is only if you're willing to use our public sidewalk, would you be asked to look at these rules and guidelines? By going through design and historic preservation, it actually leaves more wiggle room for some creativity, and that's why we kind of did that, that route. So it's, I think it's going to be a great plan, and we've already got so much interest with the new sidewalks that are opening up, so it's, it's incredible.
Well, I would just like to thank Donna and, and her advisory board. She's being very modest. They met numerous times on this and put in lots and lots of hard work to get to this document, so. And, and of course, our advisory board is made up of business owners downtown, so, so they are very vested in what we end up with and vested in making it as good as it can be. So, thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
This is an information item. Approval of the document will come before the council at the next council meeting. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinarily Rules of Professional Conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC et al., 397th District Court, Grayson County, Texas. The time is 7:06, and the council is now in executive session.